I will call the, first of all, welcome. I'd like to call the November 2nd Common Council Meeting to Order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman Frankie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to roll call, I'd like to thank the public during this most difficult time under a pandemic that you were all flexible enough to keep each other healthy and work through Zoom. We want to make sure your voice is heard via Facebook, via our conference call number, and via Zoom. So to make sure you can say or share your concerns. So with that, Put Treasure Parthoon Roll Call.
Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
Councilwoman Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
All present.
I have a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second?
I think Julie did.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Before I go to petitioning comments of citizens, can I confirm, Tim Frankie, that we are live on Facebook?
Confirmed.
We're on, so I'm having a struggle trying to get on so I can see any comments. Are there any comments, Nikotus or Tim Frankie?
At this time, I will monitor.
Are there any comments from Zoom?
Not yet, no.
And are there any comments from the conference call? Would there be any citizens or residents on the conference call that would like to make their voice heard?
Is anyone on the conference call line yet?
Hearing none, and we will check with comments from the public throughout the meeting to make sure their voice is heard.
And Mayor, just real quick, just for the record, the governor has extended the executive order allowing for virtual meetings through the end of this month, just for the record.
Thank you. And we've had our own with the city, we've had our own situation, so it's our job as well to keep the public safe. Councilman Frankie, I think you wanted to make mention to that.
Yeah, so last, well, two weeks ago, my family, my wife, my daughters, all tested positive, and they were sick for four days. My son and I are, I guess, in the lucky group that wasn't really affected by it, but seeing how weird it was firsthand where, you know, half of my family is really in bad shape. They're better now, but they were in real bad shape. And, you know, my son and I were perfectly fine. It's just a weird virus, but I can tell you with the way it affected the others, it's very real and it's very scary. So, you know, I think it's important to be vigilant, but I also apologize to the city for us not being able to have a public meeting. I suppose you can place that blame on myself and my family, but it's better to not spread and do it virtually.
Thank you, and we do wish everybody in the community, in the state, and across the nation are safe as they deal with this situation here. Standing committee reports, we'll begin with Councilman Galloway.
The Police Merit Commission will meet next Tuesday, November 10th, at 2:00 at Police Station. The Veterans Day Ceremony will be virtual on the 11th. And next meeting for Mayor's Veterans Committee will be till March.
Councilman Vincent?
Nothing to add at this meeting.
Councilwoman Brown?
Nothing to add.
Councilwoman Ficus?
At its monthly meeting on October 21st, the Park Board accepted the letter of retirement and termination from, of contract from Hermart Incorporated for the Stone Lake boat docks. The board decided to issue a request for proposal for a new contention air in the same location. Details will be determined by a subcommittee prior to the end of the year. Permission was given to solicit bids for T-shirts for the 2021 programs and events. The board was also updated on the construction progress of the Stone Lake shoreline improvements and the kayak launch. The next park board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 18th. And then, as a reminder, with the election taking place tomorrow, the traffic commission meeting has been moved from tomorrow to next Tuesday, the 10th. This will also be a Zoom meeting, so those who would like to participate in public comment or who have any questions or concerns, they call 1-800-444-2801, code 9809848. And that's all from me.
Councilwoman West?
I'd like to update everyone on Angelo Rose's departure from Leap, her new position in South Bend. Leap and the city planner's office will be working to determine the future of the position in the coming weeks, and will make the appropriate announcement when able. There will continue to, there will continue to be a focus on creating and maintaining a thriving downtown. Leap will be reviewing appointments to the Main Street Board and will announce any changes in early December. Also, for the Fire Merit Commission, four firefighters have completed their EMT training. One and two, which is a national certification firefighters receive after a series of classroom teaching and practical evolutions, hands-on training. It usually takes about 11 weeks to 40 hours a week. These classes are from the basics, the fire behavior, which is the science behind why fire does what it does, all the way up to being in a flash, flashover chamber, a burn prop that places firefighters in a room that is completely engulfed in fire. The next Fire Merit meeting will be this coming Wednesday, November 4th, at 6:00.
Councilwoman Cutler?
The Business Improvement District Board will meet this month on Monday, November 9th, at 5:00 PM. In the prize board meeting, the residential committee gave an update of upcoming repairs to homes that are part of the neighborhood improvement program. And the city planner, Tom Casey, as well as the mayor, were in attendance to discuss the 2021 outlook for the UEA board and new changes moving forward. Tom Casey will be the lead department head for the UEA, and recommendations for improvements to the farmer's market next season will be forthcoming from the planning office. The next meeting of the UEA will be a 2021 planning session, and will be held on Wednesday, November 11th, starting at 3:00 PM, and that's all.
Councilman Frankie?
The school board met on October 12th. The superintendent gave a report on the first nine weeks and their COVID response, stated that even though the numbers are worse now than they were in March, we're still nowhere near the projections in the spring, and technology and methods are improving over time, so he felt confident that school would move forward. As everyone's aware, we are at the orange level, so schools three days a week. The 2021 budget was approved, and there's a meeting tonight to approve the, the pace, I believe, for employees. And the next school board meeting will be on the 9th. Redevelopment Commission met on October 28th. The boardwalk is complete, they're working on connecting the parking lot and the trail now. Bluff City, which is the company that was hired with cleaning up most of the Flaherty and Collins property, has completed their work, and it's been turned over to Flaherty and Collins. Disbursements two and three were approved for Flaherty and Collins. And the next redevelopment commission meeting will be on the 25th at 5:15 PM.
Thank you. Before we go into ordinance review, are there any public comments via Facebook? I do not see any on the conference call or via Zoom. Okay? Councilwoman Ficus, second final reading.
Your Honor, I move to read ordinance for the second time by title only.
Thank it. I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
No. Did they vote on it?
I haven't read it for the second time yet, by title.
If you could read that, Councilwoman.
All right.
An ordinance establishing an initial rate for the city sewer services for the purpose of stormwater management.
Councilwoman Ficus has read the ordinance. This ordinance requires a public hearing, and before we go to a public hearing, Put Treasure Parthoon?
I do have an affidavit of publication from the Herald Dispatch for the proposed initial rate increases on October 21st, 2020.
Thank you. So I would like to open up the hearing on the city sewer services rates to the public. They are now open. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comment open for the sewer service?
This is Bob Vaughn.
Bob Vaughn? Mr. Vaughn, if you could again state your name and address?
Robert Vaughn, 505 H Street.
Thank you, please continue.
And Mr. Vaughn, this is Nikotus, before you start, just all public comments are limited to three minutes tonight.
Appreciate that. In February 2019, I appeared before the council to discuss the flooding of the A Street. During that conversation that I had with the council, we also had discussed that there was a 2019 stormwater increase. Fee being associated on our bill amounted to a $5.49 fee. It's amounted to about a 10% increase for basic users. And I'm just kind of wondering, you know, here again, 18 months later, we have another increase being proposed for stormwater management. And I'm just curious as to, I know a lot of these council members weren't actually on the council at the time, and back in 2019, and so I just wanted to know if they'd reviewed this and kind of questioned as to why we're back here visiting again when we were told in 2019 that this $5.49 rate increase was going to take care of the flooding on numerous streets, and they wouldn't be back again, that was prevented by Mr. Jackson. And so here again, 18 months later, we're being asked that not only stormwater, we're going to have some wastewater and some water increases. And so I'm just kind of curious, I'd like to hear some of the conversation among the council people as to, as to, you know, if they've questioned this rate increase when we were told back in 2019 that it wasn't going to happen. I'd also be interested to know what the status is for commercial industrial users. During the 2019 stormwater management, some of the commercial industrial users complained about the fees because it was based on a square foot basis, and as my understanding, they were removed from the system. So have they been brought back into the system, into the building? And what are we looking at for, you know, another 18 months?
Mr. Vaughn, thank you very much for your comments. Just to confirm, the stormwater fee for residents is remaining at 5.49. When the previous council brought back the 5.49 payment, they brought it back for business and commercial. We did not think that residents should be paying for the residential and industrial customers. So this, what this is doing is bringing those rates back to actual use based on impervious service, surface of roofs and pavement so that retail establishments aren't paying the same $5.49 that a resident like yourself is paying. Eric Walsh, if you would like to expand on that?
Yes, tonight, the $5.49 originally referenced by the gentleman, that's not changing for any residential rate. The only rates that are being changed are non-residential, and the council has before them in a two-step rate increase to go back to what the original rates were supposed to be for commercial and industrial properties, which is, as the gentleman mentioned, it's the 5.49 times the number of EDUs, which is based on impervious area. That'll be done over a two-phase, 2021, approximately 50% of that will be instituted, and then 2022, the remainder. And once again, this just takes the commercial and industrial back to where they were originally set to be with the original rate ordinance a few years ago. Residential rates are not changing. Okay, thank you.
And Bob, thank you, and I'd also like to reiterate, this isn't something anybody wants to be doing, but as well, we have $100 million worth of infrastructure, work that needs to be done, and we have $25 million in this first project where we have a situation, for example, a header in the water department is a ticking time bomb, and that we could potentially lose 65% of our water capacity to the residents of Laporte. It's something that we all inherited, and then as well, where our goal is, as you mentioned, the letter and number streets, all the flooding, flooding that takes place and the back, the water that backs up into people's basements, they want it repaired. And I don't know if Tim Frankie or Jerry Jackson, you want to add to that? But you will see these dollars that are being increased will be used in infrastructure improvements in the spring of 2021, so people will see firsthand their dollars going to work.
Also, Mayor, we have IDEM, and Jerry can explain this, as well, IDEM is legally pushing us to make some very huge investments in stormwater infrastructure as well.
Yeah, sewer separation is an ongoing project. Laporte is about 75% combined sewers. In order to prevent basement backups, sewer overflows at the treatment plant, and flooding in the streets, the sewer separation and other stormwater measurements are necessary. And if we continue to have those sort of problems, that's when IDEM jumps in and finds you and then makes you do that work anyways. So it's better to do it at our own scale, our own, our own time scale, and keeping the rates competitive with other towns while doing these improvements.
Thank you, and I'd also like to say, let's see, we have a statement here from Robert O'Donnell. "If the city has the funds to put in an overpass that we do not need, the cost of over a million dollars, when you could get the same results for a lot less and be more effective, is not right to force the people to pay when there's a better way." I'm not sure what that means. This will cost 17 cents a day for the next year. The overpass funds, again, this is a bond for $25 million. We have $100 million of infrastructure work. The federal government of an overpass that's being done, I believe you're discussing the one that might be just, maybe produced during 2024, we can't wait till then. We have infrastructure needs on water and sewer, on piping that was put in before 1901, and we can't wait. And we can't wait till 65% of our water is shut down because we haven't replaced a header. And I'm sure, Mr. O'Donnell, you would not want that done, or want that with children and so forth, that you want to be without water. So we are moving forward on that. Also, any questions? Because the increase will not fix this overnight, the additional cost needs to be held for infrastructure projects, and it appears that it didn't happen. That's from Nate Miravich, and again, one thing we can tell you is we've shown that, Eric Walsh from Baker Tilly, you might want to add to this, but there is a list of projects that people will see that'll match up with the dollars that we've been raising.
Yes, the rate adjustment, really not just stormwater, but also we'll take next wastewater and water combined will be funding approximately $25 million worth of infrastructure projects. That's by and large, those infrastructure projects are the main reason for the rate adjustments needed.
Any other discussion? Comments via Zoom, comments via the conference call, or Facebook?
I have a question.
Chris Smith, please.
Yeah, Chris, Chris Smith, 206 Holcomb Street. You've mentioned a few things of what you would like to fix with this project. What exactly, just for clarification, what exactly are you wanting to actually fix first? What do you, what is your plan to actually go after first?
Jerry and Tim, I'll let each of you share your list here.
The big, there's quite a list of small little projects, but the two big ones you'll see is the completion of the Monroe Manor Sewer Separation Project there. We did a little bit about 40% of that neighborhood in 15, and this would complete it. New streets, new sidewalks, new curb and gutter, new sewer and storm sewer. The other one that you'll see, these are both going to take place next summer, is sewer separation along I Street in the letters and number streets, I, J, K, L. There'll be storm sewers extended down into that neighborhood and put an end to the flooding and the overloading of the, that's the 12th Street Interceptor that runs through there. There's a number of projects going on at the treatment plant that unfortunately, you know, that's not in the public eye, but it's needed. There's improved screening and grit removal and removal of phosphorus, which is a mandated requirement from IDEM.
Tim, if you'd like to share your list?
Yeah, the water department is in desperate need of new raw water supply wells going to Plant One. Most of our wells that go to that plant were drilled in the 60s. Out of the four, three of them are failing at this time. So we're looking to put in a new well field that feeds the Lake Street plant. As the mayor was talking about earlier, Plant Two is our east side plant. It was built in 1968, renovated in the early 90s. There's a steel, steel pipe header inside the plant that connects the raw water supply to the pumps, to the filters, to the backwash, all part of the filtration process inside the water plant that is failing at this time. As the mayor said, right now, that plant does 65% of our pumping and throughout the day. If that pipe was to break, where we wouldn't be able to repair it, possible boil orders could go into effect. So that, to do that work at Plant Two, we need to get more water coming into Plant One to be able to keep those pumping volumes up throughout the day. That way, there wouldn't be any effects to customers or residents or commercial properties. Some of the other projects we have in mind are valve replacements. We have many broken valves around the city that we use for controlling different neighborhoods, areas. Those broken valves also create dead ends in our system. So removing those dead ends helps with fire flow, fire protection, water quality. I, you know, Chris, I wish you would have seen our presentation earlier. I had a really good picture of a four-inch water main that was installed in Laporte that's over 100 years old. And just by looking at that pipe, it's a cross-section of it, it was laying on my desk. You can see the amount of tuberculosis and corrosion inside that pipe. It's a four-inch main, and in the picture, you can see there's, we lost at least an inch, inch and a half all the way around the pipe.
I actually did, I actually did see that. No, I, I understand, I just wanted to make sure, like, this header problem, that that was actually being addressed and everybody was talking about. But it seems, I know certain neighborhoods need a lot of work, but it's like, if we have a whole treatment center and just like basically saying, screwed, I want to shut down, are we actually addressing that right away, or?
Oh yeah, that's, the main two things on the list right away is the raw water supply coming into Plant One. That way, we're able to complete the work inside Plant Two. The biggest thing when it comes to water department is having that redundancy of having multiple plants, multiple pumps at each plant. That way, there's never any interruption in service. Item, item rules say if we drop below 20 PSI in any part of the distribution system, that's a boil order. Something Laporte's not used to, we don't want them to get used to that. A lot of the communities around us deal with that on a regular basis. So it's time to address these issues. I've said in other meetings, the header problem inside Plant Two, you can take my word on it, it's a ticking time bomb. It's just a matter of time when that pipe lets go, not if, but when.
Okay, I appreciate it.
We will not be dealing with a boil order, that's why we're addressing this now, or a shutdown in water to address that. Chris, other questions?
I just have one, a quick one. Do we know, like, me and you spoke briefly over the weekend, do we know what we're going to do about the other 75 million? I mean, is that going to be more bonds later on, adding to the cost, or do you have a plan on how that's going to work out?
Sure, well, we want to make sure, again, we're, at least from my perspective, we don't want to put too much debt on the city. We want to take one step at a time, and the 25 million will allow us to deal with the more emergency-type items, and then we'll be working with Baker Tilly, Eric Walsh, to set that plan of what our financials look like. Again, we're in a pandemic, we're not sure what they'll look like next year, the year after, so we'll look at the financing perspective, and then compare that to where we are with our infrastructure, and make that determination moving forward. But this should get us moving over the next five years, and then address the following, because the 100 million didn't build up overnight, obviously, as you're aware, it's going to take a little bit of time to get some of this done.
Right, okay, so that's basically what you're planning is, this is just to get us by for now, so hopefully later, we'll have a better perspective of what we need to do and how, and what we're going to do with that.
I think Jerry would tell you the letter, the sewer separation is key, and that will take up a lot of it.
Okay, and Chris, it's important to remember also, even after, you know, this four-year rate structure, in 2024, we will still be below the state average for all of our utilities. So I think that's important for the public to remember. Just a little food for thought there. After, after the four-year increase, your water will cost you 87 cents a day on a minimum bill for all the water that goes through your house. People buy bottles of water for $2, a dollar, so it just kind of puts things in perspective.
Well, I agree, I agree with that, but I mean, it's, even though the prices are, they are, they're actually pretty low. I recently moved back from Hawaii, and let me tell you, everything's expensive out there. And, so yeah, no, everything's really cheap out here, but also so is the income. So, you know, it's kind of that worry of, how much strain is this going to put on, on the community itself? You know, how bad is it going to really affect some of these families that are on fixed incomes and, you know, stuff like that? That's, that's all of us wondering about is, what are we looking to in the future, how we're going to deal with Russia? Because at some point, we have to do it, right?
And addressing those now, you know, as time goes on, these projects get more expensive as time goes on. So now is the time to address them.
So we, thank you, Chris, and so we do have another question. Jerry, you and I have talked about this, what are the incentives for residents to manage stormwater runoff before it hits the sewer system? I know it's very difficult for you to be able to say, how do we handle 9,000 homes? To incentivize them, other than saying, we appreciate and thank you to homeowners that are willing to do that for the city?
Yeah, you kind of hit it on the head there. It's impractical for us to manage that many, to manage incentives, incentives over that many properties. But when you do things like rain barrels and rain gardens and manage your stormwater in your lawn, in your garden, reuse it, that benefits everybody in the community, and eventually could, you know, because if everyone takes that tactic, it would stave off future stormwater projects because it's being well managed on site. So there is a benefit, but it's difficult for the city to put a monetary benefit on individuals doing those activities.
Great, thank you. If there's no other comments, are there any other comments on the conference call, Zoom? Hearing none, I will now. the conference call, Zoom? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilman Vincent, second and final reading.
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a second and final reading of an ordinance by title only.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Councilman Vincent?
Ordinance establishing water rates and charges and system development charges for water service in the city of Laporte.
This ordinance as well requires a public hearing. Before we go to a public hearing, Clerk Treasure Parthum?
I have the affidavit of publication from the Herald Dispatch showing that we published on October twenty-first, twenty twenty.
So this ordinance as well requires a public hearing on the water rates and charges? I will now open the public hearing. Is there any public comment or discussion on Zoom, conference call, or Facebook? And Jerry Jackson, just to confirm, incentivizing, we are definitely encouraging, and we said that, that we definitely encourage residents to, any help that they can be to help with their storm water or water, we definitely encourage. And I think, Jerry, you always do that. So with that, any comments from the public on Zoom, conference call, or Facebook? Hearing none, I'll now close that hearing. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Cutler?
Honorable, I move to introduce an ordinance for a second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Cutler?
Ordinance establishing user charges and rates and capital cost charges and system development charges for sewage service in the city of Laporte.
We have the second reading of this ordinance. This ordinance does require a public hearing. And on the charges for system development for sewer, I will now open the public hearing. Is there any public comment or sewer rates?
Mayor, I would like to note that we have an affidavit of publication from the Herald Dispatch for proposed sewer rates on October twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Clerk Treasure Parthum. I will now open the public hearing. Is there any comments from the public on either Zoom, conference call, or Facebook? Any comments? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Let's see, now we'll move to number ten, Councilman Vincent.
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a second and final reading of an ordinance by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. And I would like to point out, Councilwoman Brown will be abstaining off of this.
Aye.
Saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Councilman Vincent?
Ordinance of the City of Laporte, Indiana, authorizing issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to refund the city's general obligation bonds, Series twenty-twelve, and pay incidental expenses in connection therewith on an account of the issuance of those bonds, and appropriating the proceeds thereof.
So we do need, this ordinance does require a public hearing. Before we begin, Clerk Treasure Parthum?
I do have an affidavit of publication for the Herald Dispatch on October twentieth, twenty twenty.
So I will now open to public hearing. Is there any public comment from either Zoom, conference call, or Facebook Live? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearings. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, and Councilwoman Brown will abstain. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Councilwoman West?
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the second mine by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman West?
An ordinance amending ordinance number seven dash two zero one six, new water and sewer connections outside of city limits.
I do have a motion. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt. Discussion. Nick Otis, would you like to add anything to this?
Again, this is just adding language, Mayor, about residents, strictly residential properties, not commercial properties, can be, connect to our utilities if mains run along their property lines. But they have to, in exchange, either be annexed immediately if they're legally eligible, or sign an annexation waiver if they're not adjacent to the city limits at the time that they connect.
And you will not receive water and sewer rates, this is a focus, unless you are a resident. And that's where our priority is, is to take care of our residents and also expand our community. So if you do need water and sewer rate or service, we will expect to annex immediately, or if you are not a nexus to one of our current sources, then we'll have you sign that you will not fight annexation. So is there any discussion?
Also, just real quick, Mayor, I think this will come up in rather limited circumstances, but we just did have a couple residents, or I say residential properties, that were interested, and they've agreed to sign the waiver. So this is just codifying that.
So I do have a motion and a second to adopt. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilman Galloway?
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce an ordinance in its entirety for the first time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Galloway?
An ordinance prohibiting new or replacement water wells within city limits. Whereas the City of Laporte Water Department has been in continuous operation since eighteen seventy, and the Water Department provides safe, reliable, and affordable water to the residents of the city of Laporte. Whereas there should be no new or replacement water wells within one quarter mile of the intersection of Truesdale Ave. and Pine Lake Avenue. Now therefore, be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, Section One, that excluding monitor wells, there should be no new or replacement wells authorized or permitted for human use or consumption, landscape, garden, animal, agriculture, or industrial use within one quarter mile of the intersection of Truesdale Avenue and Pine Lake Avenue. Section Two, that excluding monitor wells, the City of Laporte shall not authorize or issue a permit for or issue a no objection letter relating to the installation of any new or replacement water wells for human use or consumption, landscape, animal, agriculture, or industrial use within one quarter mile of the intersection of Truesdale and Pine Lake Avenue. Section Three, that the prohibitions in Section One and Two of this ordinance shall apply to the City of Laporte, and installation or replacement of any city of Laporte water wells within one quarter mile of the intersection of Truesdale Ave. and Pine Lake Avenue. Section Four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approved by the mayor, and publication as required by law, and shall remain in effect until all groundwater within one quarter mile of the intersection of Truesdale and Pine Lake Avenue in the City of Laporte is at or below Indiana Department of Environmental Management remediation closure guide, residential screening levels for all chemicals of concern. End ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman Galloway. I would like to ask Bert Cook, Executive Director and President of LEAK, to comment on the water wells within the city limits.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Bert Cook, Executive Director of the Laporte Economic Advancement Partnership. So the ordinance that you have in front of you today reflects a policy that we've had in place for a long time. Ultimately, the county has an ordinance that dictates that there are no water wells in the city of Laporte. And so, as we kind of looked at what's on the books at the county level, we realized quickly that we would like to have our own ordinance that dictates the process for either approving or permitting water wells within the city. And so what you see in front of you is that ordinance. You'll notice that there is a distance of one quarter mile of the intersection of Truesdale and Pine Lake Avenue. The specific there is in regards to the Brownfield Site, Newport Landing that we all know. We've got a significant amount of development that's occurring in that area. We have a project that is preparing to move forward on the corner there of Truesdale and Pine Lake with Kensington Development. And they had asked for some clarity as to our policy. And thus, this ordinance provides that clarity and will help them move forward as well. So this is, as I'll end my comments with the statement that we've, as Tim Warner can tell you, both Todd Taylor before him and Tim, we do not approve wells within the city limits. That's been our policy. But this puts it on the books for us here, so that we have our own particular piece of legislation that dictates the rules that surround that. Can't they answer any questions, if you have any?
Discussion from the council. Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry. You have a quarter mile of the intersection of Truesdale Ave. and Pine Lake Avenue. Now, do we have an ordinance that covers the whole town?
Councilman Galloway, that's a really good question. We don't. And I would think, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I believe in our discussions between Nick Otis, Tim Warner, Jerry Jackson, myself, and the mayor, I believe we'll probably bring another ordinance that will ultimately govern the entire city before you. But this is the most pressing. This project is ready to move forward, so we want to get this taken care of now. And it gets a little complicated trying to write one ordinance that covers everything. So we don't, but I would expect that we'll have something before you in the next month or so that would ultimately govern the entire city limits.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Galloway, on that, for example, there are, farmers have wells within the city limits, and obviously, that's on the edge of town. We didn't want to write an ordinance that would obviously prohibit farming from going on within the city. So we just have to, we got language that met, I guess, the requests of the developer, one of the developers in Newport Landing. And so that's what you have before you today. And then I agree with Bert, if it's the council's, if you have the interests in doing that, we could certainly prepare one that covers the entire city as well at a future date.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Hearing none, we'll move this for second reading to the November sixteenth meeting. Councilwoman Ficus?
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus?
An ordinance amending Section nine four dash three two two and nine four dash three two six of the Municipal Code of the City of Laporte, Indiana, Abbey Lane and Prince William Court. Whereas the Traffic Commission, after due consideration, has recommended to the Common Council that the yield sign at Abbey Lane, where it intersects with Whispering Boulevard, and the yield sign at Prince William Court, where it intersects with Whispering Boulevard, should be removed and replaced with stop signs. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, that, Section One, that Section nine four dash three two six of the Municipal Code of the City of Laporte is hereby amended to remove the following language. Abbey Lane at its intersection with Whispering Boulevard, Prince William Court at its intersection with Whispering Boulevard. Section Two, that Section nine four dash three two two of the Municipal Code of the City of Laporte is hereby amended to add the following intersections. Abbey Lane, westbound traffic at this intersection with Whispering Boulevard, Prince William Court, westbound traffic at its intersection with Whispering Boulevard. Section Three, any ordinances in conflict shall be repealed. Section Four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ficus. Discussion?
Just so that, for reference for everyone, this did go through Traffic Commission. This is out in Whispering Meadows. There are yield signs there. We need to replace them with stop signs, just because the neighborhood is growing so much, that the residents had asked that we put up stop signs as opposed to yield signs. And we're really not, we don't like yield signs anyway. So that's a little bit of the history behind that.
Any questions? Discussion. Hearing none, we'll move this ordinance to the second reading on November sixteenth. Councilwoman Ficus?
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus?
An ordinance amending Section nine four dash three two two of the Municipal Code of the City of Laporte, Indiana, placing stop signs on Katie Lane, Josh Lane, Josh Circle, Allison Lane, and Dean Court. Whereas the Traffic Commission, after due consideration, has recommended to the Common Council that stop signs be placed on Katie Lane, Josh Lane, Josh Circle, Allison Lane, and Dean Court. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, that, Section One, that Section nine four dash three two two of the Municipal Code of the City of Laporte is hereby amended to add a stop sign at the following intersections. Allison Lane, westbound traffic at its intersection with Whispering Boulevard, Dean Court, eastbound traffic at its intersection with Allison Lane, Dean Court, westbound traffic at its intersection with Whispering Boulevard, Josh Circle, eastbound traffic at its intersection with Whispering Boulevard, Josh Lane, eastbound traffic at its intersection with Whispering Boulevard, Katie Lane, eastbound traffic at its intersection- Katy Lane, eastbound traffic at its intersection with Allison Lane. Katy Lane, westbound traffic at its intersection with Whispering Boulevard. Section Two, any ordinances in conflict shall be repealed. Section Three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. And again, sorry.
No, please, Councilwoman Ficus.
These are all out in Whispering Meadows, these are some of the newer roads from like Phase Six that we're in right now, getting ready to go to Phase Seven. So I had spoken with Attorney Otis, and we're kind of doing this right now so that we don't have to do it at a future date, doing all of these roads right now.
Any other discussion? Questions? We will move this ordinance to a second reading on November 16th. Thank you, Councilwoman Ficus, and I would like to add, as head of you're head of the Traffic Commission, a couple of questions have come up about the stoplight at Waverly Road and Pine Lake, and Traffic Commission meets next Tuesday at 6:00 PM at the Police Department. And we would encourage residents that have questions regarding traffic or concerns to attend that meeting, correct?
We're actually doing Zoom. But we do have, we do have a conference call line that they can call in on. They can actually email me as well, if they like. Kay Ficus at cityoflaportin.gov.
Real quick on that, Pine Lake Ave. and Lincoln Way, of course, are controlled by INDOT, so we, as a city, have very little control over stoplights on either of those roads.
Correct, and if anybody, though, has any questions regarding traffic, they're welcome, and we encourage the residents to attend, even if it's via Zoom, and that information will be available and out for the public. Thank you. Councilman Frankie.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for its first time in its entirety.
Okay. I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Frankie.
An ordinance adding Section 94-238 prohibiting parking 10:00 PM to sunrise, Monday through Sunday, Lake Shore Drive along Stone Lake. Whereas the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte funded approximately $887,000 for the Stone Lake shoreline improvement on Lake Shore Drive along Stone Lake. And whereas, these improvements included a pedestrian walkway, fishing areas, and new areas for parking. And whereas, there needs to be parking restriction for these newly created parking spaces. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, as follows. Section One, that the Municipal Code of the City of LaPorte is hereby amended to add the following section. Section 94-238 prohibited parking 10:00 PM to sunrise, Monday through Sunday. When signs are erected, giving notice thereof, no person shall park a vehicle in any of the bump-out parking spaces located on Lake Shore Drive along Stone Lake between the hours of 10:00 PM and sunrise, Monday through Sunday. Section Two, any ordinances in conflict shall be repealed. Section Three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman Frankie. Discussion, or Councilman Frankie, would you like to clarify this ordinance?
Well, we just have new parking spaces on Stone Lake Drive, and similar to all other park closure rules and parking, we want to follow suit and not allow it overnight.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mayor, as well, I think coming from Mark Schreiber, the Parks Department Director, because these locations are so close to also private residences, wanted to ensure safety for the private residents, that there weren't vehicles there overnight as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we will move this to second reading at the November 16th meeting. Thank you all for that. Let's move to other business. I've got a few items here. Number one, tomorrow's Election Day, obviously it's an important election. Please make sure everyone in our community get out and vote, if you haven't already. Number two, LEAP pickups started today in the area of the Civic, and will move clockwise around the city. Wall cleanup is also this week. On your regular pickup day, upholstered items should be wrapped in plastic due to COVID, and that is our vendor RTS who does mandate that. Governor Holcomb and why we're here today via Zoom as well extended the Public Health Emergency Declaration, as Nick Otis mentioned, through November 30th. And also, we had some acts of violence this weekend with a couple shooting incidents, and this is something that, again, will not be tolerated in the City of LaPorte. Police and code enforcement are working extremely hard. Jefferson Avenue has been a focus of our city since this administration took over. We've made a lot of progress, and we will not accept that type of behavior in our community. And as I said earlier, rental units have been a major problem in our community, and renting to individuals that don't want to follow the rules of the City of LaPorte. For example, since you condemned 701 Maple in early, I think, June, and we gave six months to allow people to get out there, which is December 24th, we've had over 100 calls of service to our police department. It's enough. Jefferson Avenue is the same issue, the same problem. And we're not going to accept this type of behavior by individuals, so I want to make sure that's clear. Also, somewhat of a sad day today. This is Councilwoman Sarah Brown's last meeting, and we've appreciated all her love and concern and care for this community. And she's not leaving the leaving the county, but this will be her last day as, at a meeting anyway, at the City of LaPorte, and I just want to thank her for all her efforts and commitment to LaPorte.
Thank you. It was something I always remember, Treasure, and thankful for everybody supporting me through this process.
So, because we've had Zoom, we'll make sure I walk through some of the comments that are on here to make sure everybody's voice is heard. Here's one message, it baffles me that anyone honors the legal mismanagement of ordinances. You're welcome to email me at tdermody@cityoflaportin.gov. I'll look forward to seeing your concerns and how they are mismanaged, if you can email me directly, and then the city council person will be announced in this coming week. There was also harassment in a voting line in LaPorte, the police were called. Can you condemn those acts of harassment as well? We certainly don't, I'm not sure who would encourage harassment. We all condemn, I think I can speak for the council, condemn any harassment of individuals of both sides of the aisle, no matter who it is. And everybody should feel safe to vote, and please, contact the police department if there are those issues that have taken place. Why did the city's comments seem to insinuate that the city's shootings were related to renters? We've had nothing but problems, all the problems have been related to tenants and landlords on Jefferson Avenue. And the house that was a drive-by shooting was, again, a rental. And again, we have a history. I know people want to spin and try to twist and say this is about poor people. This has nothing to do about poor people. In fact, we've been finding alternative housing that some in the public ignore, the subhuman type of apartments that these individuals are having to live in. The one thing we will not ignore is people breaking the law and making residents in our community feel unsafe, and that I can tell you we will deal with. So any other questions via Zoom, via the conference call?
Mayor, I know speaking with court security staff, one of the issues maybe because of COVID is people wearing masks, supporting maybe one of their candidates. You can't wear that into the voting booths or into the voting areas, so just keep that in mind because you'll be told to remove that, you better have something to cover your face when you enter.
Well, absolutely, it's no different than anything else. You can't wear T-shirts, sweatshirts, anything like that. Supporting any candidate, whether it's at the presidential level down to a local race. So with that, any comments from the public, or I mean from the council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned, everybody have a great evening.
Thank you.
To vote.
Bye, Sarah.
Bye, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.